Mr. Mercer, would you please read the statement to bring us back into open session?
Chair Swigert and I move that the record shows that the only items discussed in the closed meeting were those specifically cited in the motion to convene into the closed meeting and those lawfully exempted from statutory meeting requirements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lamonia, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Dr. Smith?
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
Dr. Cotton, do you have any items resulting from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The following personnel appointments are presented for board action. Mr. Matthew W. Fulford from Assistant Principal Grassfield High to Supervisor of Warehouse and Logistical Services, Great Bridge Boulevard Complex. Ms. Carrie L. Smith from Assistant Principal Great Bridge High to Supervisor of Safety and Security, Instructional Services Center. Mrs. Lisa M. Amerson from Special Education Administrator Edwards Wilson Center to Assistant Principal Great Bridge High. Mrs. Mary C. Askew from Assistant Principal Virginia Beach City Public Schools to Assistant Principal Crestwood Middle. Dr. Lauren F. Bellamy from Assistant Principal Hugo Owens Middle to Assistant Principal Hickory High. Ms. Wendy J. Chapman from Assistant Principal Indian River Middle to Assistant Principal Hugo Owens Middle School. And Roxanne F. Colby from Assistant Principal Norfolk Highlands Primary to Assistant Principal Western Branch Intermediate.
I'll entertain a motion for approval. Moved by Mr. Lamonia, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mercer, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Dr. Smith, do you need a show of hands?
Yes, please.
So, please, show of hands for aye.
Okay.
Show of hands for nay. Opposed.
Motion carries with a vote of six to three with Board Members Dean McCormick and Walker voting in opposition.
Dr. Smith, or the, I'm sorry, Dr. Cotton, are there any additional items?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The following employees were also selected to fill administrative one positions for the 23-24 school year. These appointments will not require board action, but I do want to make the community aware of these appointments. Ms. Brianna Coburn, School Improvement Specialist, Virginia Beach City Public Schools to Assistant Principal One, Great Bridge High. Ms. Jessica L. Pascal, Professional and Organizational Development Coach to Assistant Principal One, Chittam Elementary. Mrs. Tricia G. Harris, Title One Instructional Coach to Assistant Principal One, Norfolk Highlands Primary. And Mrs. Tara G. Birchfield, Professional and Organizational Development Coach to Special Education Administrator One, Edwards Wilson Center.
Thank you. We will now move on to the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. For tonight's invocation, we will observe a moment of silence. Afterward, I'll ask Aubrey Ayers, a fifth grader from Sparrow Road Intermediate School, to lead us in the pledge. Please stand as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, to the resolve, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Aubrey, for taking time out of your schedule to come and lead us tonight in the pledge. We are now moving on to awards and recognitions. The first item is the memorial resolution. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Chair Swigert. At the request of the Superintendent, I have prepared a resolution honoring the life and service of one of our esteemed employees, Mrs. Dusty Renee Gable, who served as the media specialist at Grassfield High School before her passing this past December. We have several special guests with us tonight. Before I read the resolution, I would like to invite Mr. Mike Perez, Principal of Grassfield High School, to the podium to provide remarks.
Good evening, Chair Swigert, Vice Chair Mercer, members of the board, Dr. Cotton, members of the superintendent's staff. Joined by Dusty Gable's husband, Jason Gable, sons Brett and Gavin. Thank you very, very much from the bottom of our hearts for inviting us tonight to recognize Ms. Gable's service to Chesapeake Public Schools and Grassfield High School. She passed in December during her 16th year of service. She is the epitome of the Grizzly Way. In her honor, we have collected 300 books with Dusty's books labeled inside for Grassfield High School. We also collected over 600 books to distribute to Camelot Elementary School for their library and 750 additional books to Camelot for students to actually take a book home for the summer, all in Ms. Gable's name. So again, thank you very much for honoring her legacy, for supporting her family, Grassfield High School, and the Grizzly Way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Before I read the resolution, I would like to offer to Mr. Gable if any additional family members have joined you, if you'd like to report to the podium for the reading of the resolution.
And Madam Chair, at this time, I'll read the resolution. Be it known to all persons that we, the members of the Chesapeake School Board, here assembled on this 12th day of June 2023, do hereby pay tribute to the life and memory of Mrs. Dusty Renee Gable. Whereas Mrs. Dusty Gable was employed by Chesapeake Public Schools in 2001 as an earth science biology teacher at Oscar F. Smith High School, and after she received a master's degree in library media from Old Dominion University in 2006, she was hired to serve as a media specialist and proud member of the first faculty and staff of Grassfield High School, where she served the children, their parents, and others with distinction and honor. And whereas she dearly loved her colleagues and students, had faith in each of them and their talents, and was always willing to assist those who needed help, as evidenced by her devotion to her student's success. And whereas in her 20 years of service to the district, she was highly esteemed by her colleagues, students, and friends as an invaluable asset to the school system and to the community, and will always be remembered by them for her sincerity, her laughter, her special gift of making everyone feel important, her love for all children, and her love of learning. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the school board of the city of Chesapeake, do gratefully acknowledge her service to the school system and extend to her family our heartfelt sympathy at her passing. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be made part of the minutes of this date and the original presented to her family as evidence of our esteem and reverence for the memory of Mrs. Dusty Renee Gable. Madam Chair, the resolution is attested by each of the school, each member of the school board, our superintendent, and the clerk of the board, and at this time, I respectfully request adoption of this resolution.
I make a motion to approve the memorial resolution honoring Mrs. Dusty Renee Gable.
Okay. Moved by Mrs. Scott, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Mercer, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Dr. Smith?
Motion carries with all board members voting yes. Mr. Perez, would you please escort Mr. Gable and his family to meet the members of the board?
extend our deepest sympathies to you and your family. The last item on awards and recognitions is the Teachers for Tomorrow. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Chair Swigert. Next, we will recognize graduating seniors who have been offered guaranteed contracts through the Teachers for Tomorrow program. Mr. Mike Bailey, our Director of Human Resources, will facilitate these awards. I'll ask Chair Swigert and Dr. Cotton to meet me at the awards table for these recognitions.
This is our largest group yet, so we're gonna squeeze in here. All right, good job, everybody. Well, good evening, Madam Chair Swigert, members of the school board, Dr. Cotton and staff. I am pleased to stand before you tonight on behalf of the Departments of College and Career Readiness and Human Resources to announce our 2023 Future Teacher Guaranteed Contract recipients. At this time, we would like to recognize the 30 students who participated in our Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow program through their high school, or, for the first time, the Early Childhood Education Program at the Chesapeake Career Center. They have been offered a guaranteed contract with our school division when they successfully complete their degrees at their select universities. We ask that each candidate please take a step forward when we call their name to be Emma Becker from the Chesapeake Career Center will be majoring in Early Childhood Education and attending Tidewater Community College and Old Dominion University. Janaya Cuffey, also from the Chesapeake Career Center, majoring in Early Childhood Education at Norfolk State University. Olivia McLaughlin from Deep Creek High School will be majoring in Elementary Education and attending Longwood University. Gabriel Amerson attends Grassfield High School, will be majoring in Elementary Education at Christopher Newport University. Micah Clifton from Grassfield High School will be majoring in Elementary Education and attending Tidewater Community College and Longwood University. Peyton Coleman from Grassfield High School will also be majoring in Elementary Education and Music at Liberty University. Brianna Coward at Grassfield High School will be majoring in Elementary Education at Virginia Commonwealth University. Sydney Han from Grassfield High School will be majoring in Elementary Education at Mary Washington University. Anna Starcher from Grassfield High School will be majoring in Elementary Education and attending Tidewater Community College and Old Dominion University. Emma Taylor will attend, excuse me, is attending Grassfield High School and will be attending Longwood University and majoring in Elementary Education. Emma DeMalle from Great Bridge High School, majoring in Secondary English, going to Tidewater Community College and William &amp; Mary. Alexis Durand from Great Bridge High School will be majoring in Secondary Biology at Old Dominion University. Abigail Hartwick from Great Bridge High School will be majoring in Secondary Math at James Madison University. Marissa Klinger from Great Bridge High School will be majoring in Elementary Education at Randolph Macon University. Jenna Cosin from Great Bridge High School will be majoring in Secondary Biology at Old Dominion University. Trinity Robinson from Great Bridge High School will be majoring in Elementary Education and attending Tidewater Community College and Old Dominion University. Dion Spencer from Great Bridge High School will be majoring in Political Science, Education, and Government at Virginia Commonwealth University. Scarlett Traver from Great Bridge High School will be majoring in Elementary Education at Columbia International College in South Carolina. Emma Wadavick from Great Bridge High School will be majoring in Special Education at Mary Baldwin University. Atlee Bartok from Hickory High School will be majoring in Education with a minor in Business and Advertising and attending Old Dominion University. Avery Bartok from Hickory High School will be majoring in Social Sciences and Elementary Education, attending Tidewater Community College and William &amp; Mary. Madison Freeman from Hickory High School will be majoring in Elementary Education at Longwood University. Henley Hallmark from Hickory High School will be majoring in Elementary Education at Longwood University. Anna Hans from Hickory High School will be majoring in Elementary Education and attending Longwood University. Kennedy Hyman from Hickory High School will be majoring in Elementary Education at James Madison University. Madison Kelly from Hickory High School will be majoring in Art Education at Virginia Commonwealth University. Erin Murphy from Hickory High School will be majoring in interdisciplinary studies in elementary education and psychology at Virginia Commonwealth University. Ethan Rose from Hickory High School will be majoring in Secondary History and attending Tidewater Community College and James Madison University or Old Dominion University. Maisie Shields from Hickory High School will be majoring in Elementary Education and attending Virginia Tech. Julie Anne Sorey from Hickory High School will be majoring in Communication Disorders and Special Education and attending Radford University. We know the value of securing high-quality teaching candidates as soon as we can. These students standing before you know that being a teacher is their calling. They've discovered their passion and desire to teach our next generation. We are so excited to welcome them to our school family. At this time, we ask these amazing future teachers to go around to meet our school board and receive their special certificates, and congratulations. Who did we miss? What's your name?
Nias Martinez.
Nias Martinez. And you will be attending? I'm sorry. What college will you be attending?
Randolph Macon.
Randolph Macon. Congratulations, and so sorry.
Please make sure you haven't left your phone behind.
During their allotted time, speakers should observe our rules of decorum and know that expressions of concerns and criticism on matters of school policy and operations is welcome. While the speaker's own comments are welcome, they may not play prerecorded messages. Dr. Smith, are there any citizens who have requested time to speak this evening?
Yes, we have six citizens requesting to address the board under Hearing of Citizens.
I want to thank those speakers who sign up to address the board this evening. There are two ways that citizens can request time to speak at the meeting. You can either call the clerk's office before 12 noon the day of the meeting, or sign up to speak prior to the start of the meeting. All in-person requests to speak must be submitted to the deputy clerk five minutes prior to the published meeting's start time. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. Once your allotted time is over, we ask that you promptly exit the podium. You may choose to sit in the boardroom if seats are available, but standing or sitting on the floor will not be permitted, and you may not block the exit doors. We would also like to ask that you refrain from any behavior that disrupts the meeting, including the use of profanity, applause, cheering, or jeering. Dr. Smith, please call the first speaker.
Yes, Speaker number one, we'd like to invite you to the podium. Speakers are called in numerical order and asked to state their name and city of residence before they begin their remarks.
Vic Nichols, Chesapeake. I would like to recognize Danisha Merriweather of Black Minds Matter. Incidentally, Norfolk and Portsmouth have one of their schools. 17C, this is a great start. I'm wondering if we will ever recognize the valedictorians and salutatorians. There's been a whole lot of back and forth with the Satanist. And listening to everything, you know, I thought about it, and I kind of thought, you know, for those that are Christians, I think we kind of owe him an apology, because it seems like we're acting like we've forgotten his promises, and we're not modeling history. You see, Satan thought he had won too, until the third day. Thank you.
Speaker number two is a no-show. Speaker number three, it's your turn to address the board. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
I am currently a school bus driver with the city of Chesapeake, driving for Grassfield Elementary School, Hugo Owens Middle School, and also Grassfield High School. With me here tonight are several bus drivers. Also watching online are several bus drivers who are interested in what we have to say. Talking to you today, tonight, about the air-conditioned school buses that have been ordered, we are so thankful that you guys have recognized, as leaders of our community and school, that we need air conditioning on our buses. And you have graciously ordered 100, you ordered another 103, and then you ordered another 47. If I calculated that right, that's 250. The problem is, is that the schools are not using the air-conditioned buses. They're not being assigned to anybody. We were told at one of our in-services before they came in that they would be given out as replacements of buses, 100s, 200s, 300s, and so forth. Now, 100s were given replaced by AC buses. The other ones have not been. It is getting up to about 120 to 125 degrees on our school buses. We have a lady here tonight that represents, she's been with our, she's been driving a school bus for 47 years, and until this year has never taken a day off. I say she deserves an air-conditioned school bus. We are burning up. Our kids' faces are turning red. I actually had a student pass out because of the heat on the bus. We actually had a driver today that told me she came close to passing out. Now, here's the problem that we're dealing with. I met with Dr. Benson and Mr. Bird, and the problem was, is that I sent Mr. McCormick a, an email about 10 days ago, and have not heard any response from him so forth. But, it was funny that when I got called into Dr. Benson's office, that email was posted on the board that we were looking at. He could get a response, but I couldn't get a response. I also talked to the lady that had me as a guest speaker tonight. Before I knew it, before the next day come, I was called into Dr. Benson's office. It's funny that I get called in over something that I want to speak to you guys about that we're grateful for. These buses are being used, whether we like to call it or not, spares. They're being used as needed. These buses need to be assigned to a person. It's getting hot. Today, my bus got up to 119 degrees. I implore any of you guys up here, and ladies up here, to ride with me one afternoon and see what that feels like when you're sitting on that bus for three and a half, four hours. And we do that on a daily basis. Why? Because we love our jobs, we love our kids. But, we need to be given the buses out on the street as we were promised. You guys put in the effort, you guys put in the money, you said it was needed, it's needed on the streets. Not as spares, but as assigned buses. Thank you.
Speaker number four, it's your turn at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Good evening. My name is Robin. I'm a Chesapeake resident, and as a former elementary teacher, I had the privilege and responsibility to guard and educate the hearts, minds, and souls to over 500 children over a span of 25 years. My students came from diverse backgrounds, upbringings, home and life experiences. However, there was a common denominator among them all. When they walked into my classroom, each one needed to feel unconditionally cared for, accepted, have a sense of safety, protection, and trust in how I would consistently interact with them on a daily basis. In order to have the ear of my students and be able to educate them in a way they would want to learn and enjoy coming to school, these needs had to be met first. Children may not know how to phrase these feelings, but one of my favorite quotes is from Maya Angelou, and it says, "They may forget what you said, but they will never forget how you made them feel." As a very shy and quiet little girl myself, looking back, I can so very much relate to the truth in that quote, and in fact, every one of us are born with these same innate needs. As I've continued to return to these meetings to plead with you to revoke to not allow non-exempt clubs to meet in our school facilities, which means disposing of the Satan Club, I've also started questioning why these speakers in support of the club are so determined. What is behind their committed determination to call for and support a Satan Club for little children? I've come to the conclusion that not all- Club, I've also started questioning why these speakers in support of the club are so determined? What is behind their committed determination to call for and support a Satan Club for little children? I've come to the conclusion that not all, but perhaps the majority of them, grew up under parents, caregivers, teachers, and sadly, even Christian leaders they saw as hypocritical, who did not provide their innate needs and broke their sense of trust. And in turn, many have rebelled against all authority, and in their need of seeking acceptance, have been persuaded that Satan Clubs are the alternative to Christianity and to mankind. If this speaks of any of you here tonight, I want you to know how very sorry I am that critical role models and people of influence have let you down and failed you. Humans let humans down. Humans can distort the Word of God by their own doctrines. But I also want to encourage you that God will never let you down, and He promises to never leave or forsake you. He is the way, the truth, and the life. He is for you, He calls you the apple of His eye, His child, His friend, and your name is engraved in the palm of His hand. But in contrast, supporting a Satan Club and the true principles behind their sponsor, the Satanic Temple, your pull to unite is based on lies, not truth, and it will never fill the void in your hearts. Scripture says that the devil is a liar, the father of lies. He is alive and well still, also referred to as the prince of the world, but we must choose to never let him have a hold over us or our children, just as Christ chose not to. He came to conquer evil with good, deception with truth, and despair with hope. School Board, I ask you once again to remove the access to lies, evil, and destruction from our schools. Restore their trust in us as educators.
Speaker number five, it's your turn at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Thank you. My name is Dr. David Tree, and I am from Chesapeake. And I am here because I have a problem that I'm hoping that we can work together to resolve involving one of my children. I happen to be a foster parent. A little over a year ago, a child, a Hispanic child was placed into my custody. While he is currently enrolled and head start, I believe he is ready to go to kindergarten. Indeed, I have test scores here showing that he would be ready. The problem is that his birthday is on January sixteenth, and obviously we know the cutoff is September thirtieth. However, that being said, he is taller, stronger, and I believe smarter, as the tests show here, than the average kid, and he is ready for kindergarten. I have contacted several individuals in Chesapeake school system, including the principal of the school that he would go to, as well as Dr. Cotton's office, and I have gotten no comments or results. In fact, I have been ignored. So, I am here to ask, to request, who do I need to talk to to possibly resolve this? And if this is a policy issue, what do I need to do? Who do I need to talk to so we can perhaps look at revising said policy? Thank you.
Speaker number six, it's your turn at the podium.
My name is Steve Sheerbaum. I'm from Chesapeake. I'm here again to express my opposition to the after-school Satan Club meeting at BM Williams. To begin, I would like to ask this body several questions, which I still have not received answers to. I encourage you to live out the statement you make about following up with the Hearing of Citizens. You have yet to do this, even though I've been speaking since December. My concerns are, one, will the after-school Satan Club meet for the next school year? Two, when are the deadlines to apply? Three, will this be public information if they are approved to meet? If it is not public information, why wouldn't it be? I feel the public has a right to know information regarding every organization that is using the school district's buildings. You are acting as stewards of property that is funded through our tax dollars. With my remaining time, I would like to briefly share the story of Sister Wilhelmina Lancaster. She was a nun that died in 2019. Her main accomplishment was starting a praying order of nuns in Missouri. The community decided to move her buried remains several weeks ago inside their monastery chapel, which is common for a founder of a community. What they found was shocking. The body of Sister Wilhelmina did not suffer decay like a body should have. After being buried for four years in a wooden coffin and not being embalmed, the body should have had, should have been skeletal remains weighing about twenty pounds. But the body was almost fully intact and weighed more than eighty pounds. The rate of decay should have been even worse, as her coffin was broken due to a flood, and her body was covered in mold. Despite this, both her body and her religious outfit, known as a habit, were preserved. As a result, hundreds of pilgrims have flocked to a rural town in Missouri to behold this miracle. I feel it is important to share this story with you, as the Satanists have regularly come before the school board stating blasphemous comments, such as "There is no God, devil, hell, heaven," et cetera. Here we have an ongoing miracle. I should also mention that there are many other saints whose bodies or body parts have not suffered decay, who have died hundreds of years ago. Furthermore, I am unaware of anyone's body not decaying who did not live a holy life unless extraordinary measures were taken, such as freezing a body. This should cause the members of this assembly to reflect on their deaths, as it is the only thing that is certain in this life. Remember, you are dust, and onto dust you shall return. I implore you to start leading this school district as God wishes you to lead. I can assure you that God is not pleased with your inability to prevent the after-school Satan Club from meeting. How will this affect your eternal judgments? Do you expect to hear the words of our Lord in Matthew 25:21 of "Well done, my good and faithful servant; because thou hast been faithful over a few things, I will place thee over many things; enter into the joy of thy Lord"? Or do you expect to begin your eternity hearing the words of our Lord in Matthew 7:23, "I never knew you; depart from me, you that work iniquity"? May God give you the grace, and may He display mercy for you all to repent. Thank you.
This concludes our speakers for this evening.
We will now move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approval. Moved by Mr. Mercer, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Limonia. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Dr. Smith?
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
We are now moving on to the information agenda. The first item is the SER survey results. Ms. Lucente?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm waiting for the slide to come up. There we go. This evening, we're going to have a short presentation on the SER III survey results. So, we'll cover the survey results, and the current application expenditures, and the proposed amendment. And the next steps, of course, are just putting in the amendment. The SER III survey results, if you probably remember, I hope, from the last presentation, covers four specific areas by the language on the applications and the language in the law. There's questions related to learning loss, safety, prevention, and mitigation, academic, social, emotional, and mental health, and additional feedback. And you're required to request input from specific groups of communities, parents, families, and students, as you can see, your own staff members, community groups, and stakeholders for specific groups, ELL, homeless, students, special ed, things like that. The survey this time only garnered about a hundred responses. The last response, or the last survey we did, had a little bit over five hundred, I believe, and the time before that was close to five hundred also. Again, in learning loss, the same information is being requested, tutoring and remediation, which we are providing. We use university tutors to supplement the tutoring that is provided by other CPS staff members, smaller class sizes, which means additional staff members, and additional space, reading and math specialists in each school. We do have reading specialists in each school. I think we have math specialists that treat, not treat, that's not the right word, serve multiple locations, and additional instructional supplies. In the last amendment we did, included additional instructional supplies that were allocated to each school for them to use as they saw fit with their particular populations. Again, on learning loss, they asked for additional staff, additional ESL teachers. As you recall, we have two added for the school board operating budget for next year, and we were able to restructure two positions during 2023, to provide four more ESL staff members, an additional staff and funding for special education. That's primarily driven by IEP requirements, and professional development in various areas. That mostly came from our staff. As you can imagine, we've had a significant increase in the number of technologies that we have out there, the number of softwares that are now being used. So, the employees are getting more comfortable using both the equipment and the software. And I can attest to that just from Google Docs. Safety, prevention, and mitigation, additional support staff, additional security staff, police at elementary schools, metal detectors, as you can see what they're asking about, or talking about. And we have provided additional security staff at elementary. We have, at the last amendment, we had the metal detectors which have been ordered, air infiltration, or air filtration, rather, at the schools. That is an ongoing cycle of replacements that are handled by school plants. And in the academic, social, and emotional, again, requests are for additional mental health professionals in each facility. That, again, is limited by state, space, and staff. Requests for guidance classes to be weekly as opposed to every other week, and professional services, and our FACE group is providing additional information to parents on resources and services as they have those activities in the communities. So, other suggestions, of course, are increased staff pay, because that's an ongoing and recurring expenditure. That's not something we would normally want to provide in SER III, a return to free meals for students, additional bus drivers and school nutrition workers, both of which are difficult to hire. So, the positions are there, the people to fill the positions are not as available, and additional translation services into primarily Spanish. So, the SER III requires twenty percent to be used for learning loss, and it requires periodic updates. As you can see, we've had three surveys, and there are additional means of stakeholder input, and that's the three minutes at the school board meetings, Let's Talk, and Dr. Cotton's various meetings with different groups of employees or students. To date, we just did a recent update on this, so I didn't want to recapitulate the whole thing, but we spent a little bit, about fifty-one, a little over fifty-one percent of the money. A good portion of that is HVAC, not HVAC, in learning loss. It's subs and TAs, security people, and the other monies will be spent next year. The recommendations for adjustments right now are to increase and enhance the security at the elementary level. And the estimated cost right now is about a little over eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars. So, the recommendation right now is to make adjustments in the learning loss section. As you can see, the areas that are italicized, we want to move about seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars out of the subs and tutors, Chromebooks and hotspots, especially the Chromebooks and the hotspots are able to be funded by other means, E-Rate, school operating budget, school textbook fund. So, we have less of a need to fund those out of SER III. The other portion of the funds would come out of reductions in contact tracing. As the pandemic has waned, there's been less and less need for contact tracing. So, the adjustment, the amendment that would be made would be to move those funds from learning loss to non-learning loss, and we would still be at forty-nine point eight percent of total funding, with the twenty percent requirement being in learning loss. So, what our next steps would be, would be to submit the amendment, and once we have the amendment submitted and approved, then we can move forward with the requirements or the suggestions on the additional security at elementary. If you have any questions, I'm available to respond.
I see no questions, so thank you, Ms. Lucente. We are now moving on to proposed revisions to School Board Policy 9-45.1. Dr. Miller?
Thank you, Chairperson Swaggart. Tonight, I am bringing an addition to Policy 9-45, Health and Welfare, Health and Safety. This policy and regulation will be regarding naloxone, commonly referred to as NarCam. The Virginia Department of Health has reported that from 2020 to 2021, there was a seventy-seven percent increase in opioid deaths. As a result, schools across the country are currently devising policies for the implementation of NarCam in our schools as a lifesaving measure. NarCam is a medicine that can rapidly reverse an opioid overdose. NarCam will be stored in a secured location at each school in the nurse's office, and be readily available to those that are authorized and trained to administer it. The regulations that accompany this policy outline who is able to possess and administer NarCam. This past January, all of our current clinical staff at each school building received training in the administration of NarCam, and now may possess and administer this lifesaving drug. In the near future, we plan to train additional school personnel who will also be able to render aid if needed. Chair Swaggart, may I respond to any questions in regards to this policy or regulation?
Mr. Poole?
I just have a question. So, since NarCam is so easily available, why wouldn't it make sense to store it with your AEDs? Because if you have someone unresponsive, not breathing, immunoglobulin?
That's a good question, Mr. Poole. I believe our rationale for that is to have it stored. Our AED boxes are not locked, therefore you have the possibility of individuals going in there and taking that medication out.
So, let me ask you this. Does anyone take your AEDs out currently?
In some instances, they have, kids.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, because if you think about how soon you can respond to somebody who has this issue, I would think that anybody who's unconscious, and one of the first things you're going to do is respond with the AED, I think it would make sense to have it in the same arena or place, so that you could respond quicker with it. This is my opinion.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I see no other questions. Thank you, Dr. Miller.
If there are none, then I will place this policy on the consent agenda for the next board meeting on June 26. And I'll look at that.
The next item is the federal grant applications. Ms. Edwards?
Good evening, and thank you. Each year, we present our proposed spending plan for federal funds for instructional purposes. And tonight, Mrs. Leslie Russell is here to present that plan, and she has other members of the Department of Assessment Academic Support with her. Leslie?
Good evening, Chairman Swaggart, Vice Chair Mercer, members of the school board, Dr. Cotton, and members of the superintendent's staff. This evening, I will share information regarding four grants available to school districts under the Every Student Succeeds Act. I would like to begin by introducing my colleagues who helped develop the various grant applications that will be shared this evening. Dr. Jotan Jones, who supported Title One Part A, Title Two, excuse me, Part A, grant. Mrs. Deana Otwell Clinton is responsible for the Title Three Part A grant, and I am responsible for the Title One Part A grant and the Title Four Part A grant. On the team's behalf, I will share the purpose of each grant and provide an overview of the proposed expenditures for the 2023-2024 school year. It is important to note, the grant awards presented this evening are preliminary, and the actual award amounts are not expected until August or September. The grants we will share this evening were written in compliance with the federal application guidelines and are aligned with our district's strategic goals. The development of each grant application is a collaborative effort that involves feedback from various stakeholders, including staff, students, families, and community members. Each grant application is designed to reflect our district's mission to inspire, engage, and empower all learners to achieve their highest potential. Private schools in the area were provided meaningful consultation and given the option to participate in the various grants presented this evening. I would like to begin by updating you on the Title One Part A grant. The Title One Part A program is designed to ensure that low-income students have a fair, equal, and significant opportunity to obtain a high-quality education and reach, at minimum, proficiency on state assessments. As a district, we believe that early intervention is key, and we will continue to focus Title One funding on supporting Title One students in grades pre-K through five. In addition, we also support one middle school, Oscar Smith Middle School. Currently, all fourteen of our Title One schools receive school-wide support, which enables a host of opportunities for not only interventions, but extensions of learning too. The projected award amount for the 2023-2024 is roughly seven-point-one million dollars. Based on feedback from various stakeholders, the money will be used to support the following: fund salary and fringe benefits for seventy employees who support Title One instructional efforts; provide learning experiences both in and out of the classroom; purchase materials and supplies to support instructional efforts; continue to invest in software and technology resources; employ tutors to assist with differentiated support and enrichment; provide professional development for staff members; support and retain our highly qualified teachers through staff initiatives, such as such as opportunity culture, which will be in two of our Title One schools. And explore parent and family engagement supports to strengthen home-to-school and community connections. Last year, two family engagement centers were opened at Camelot Elementary and Crestwood Intermediate Schools to import our, support our family engagement efforts. Next, I would like to provide an update on Title Two Part A. Federal funds awarded under Title Two Part A support programs and efforts to increase student academic achievement by improving teacher and principal quality. The grant also supports our goal to recruit, retain, and support our valued employees as the funds can be used to support efforts to retain, develop, and sustain teachers through retention practices and effective and continual professional development. Using level funding, the award amount of just over a million dollars will be used to recruit and retain quality educators. Support and accelerate it learning through job-embedded professional development coaches and school-based teacher leaders. Provide incentive awards for our national board-certified teachers. And provide high-quality professional development opportunities, materials, direct support, and resources to current and aspiring district educators. And support participating private school partners by providing direct support and assistance and identifying professional development opportunities and securing resources, materials, and training for current and aspiring private school educators. At this time, I would like to share information regarding Title Three Part A. The purpose of Title Three Part A is to ensure school districts provide English learners, commonly referred to as E Ls, a language assistance program to aid them in attaining English language proficiency and developing high levels of achievement in all areas of the curriculum to meet the same challenging state academic standards as their peers. The projected twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, excuse me, twenty-three, twenty-four award amount of roughly one hundred and twenty-two thousand for the Title Three grant will be combined with the proposed one hundred and fifty thousand in transferability funds from Title Four to aid administrators and teachers in providing opportunities to enhance the services offered to the estimated sixteen hundred E Ls and their families. Funds will be utilized to pay for translation services needed during the school year. Funds will be utilized to support parent-as-educational partner efforts and federally mandated portion of the E L program that extends existence to parents of E Ls, aiding them in their understanding and embracing the operations of the school their children attend. Funds will be used to hire tutors to offer supplemental language instruction. Funds will be used to allow administrators and teachers to explore professional development and conference opportunities. Funds will also be used to purchase educational materials and supplies to complement the curriculum. And funds will be, also be used to provide support for E Ls during the summer to help enrich their acquisition of the English language. Finally, I will share information regarding the Title Four Part A grant. Title Four Part A is the Student Support and Academic Enrichment, S S A E, grant. The grant is intended to improve students' academic achievement by providing all students with equitable access to high-quality educational experiences in support of well-rounded opportunities, safe and healthy students, and the effective use of technology. The projected allocation for the Title Four grant is roughly five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And as mentioned early, earlier, one hundred and fifty thousand will be transferred to Title Three Part A in support of our E L students. Remaining Title Four funds will permit this division to support registration for all tenth graders to take the P S A T. Funding is also earmarked for AP testing registrations, dual enrollment courses, additional recorder instruments for select students in fourth grade music classes, and music assessments fees for select middle school and high school students. The federal funding source also supports maker spaces, science, technology, engineering arts, math better known as STEAM, library media, health and physical fitness, to include supplies, resources, and equipment. In addition, we plans to leverage the funding to enhance instruction with technology tools. Final funds, finally, funds will be used to spend on professional development on all aspects of technology to include virtual instruction, STEAM, coding, and the five Cs of critical thinking, creative thinking, collaboration, communication, and citizenship. At this time, we will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I see no questions at this point. Thank you. The last item on the information agenda is an update from this, on the strategic plan. Dr. Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good evening. I want to begin by saying I'm honored to present an update on the Empower two thousand twenty-five strategic plan on behalf of the many people whose contributions have brought us to where we are today. From the launch of our strategic plan, many changes have occurred that I will not even begin to outline. I know you all are well aware of those challenges. However, the strength of our strategic plan lies in its ability to adapt over time and guide us toward achieving our goals in an ever-changing and evolving educational climate. What I've asked Mrs. Fallon Graham to do, and I think you all have already met Mrs. Graham. She's our Director of Planning Policy and Research. I got it. And she's here tonight to provide an overview of our strategic plan. Even though she's the one presenting and presenting the work, there are lots of people behind the scenes who are, are doing the work. And she's up here today as our spokesperson. And of course, you may have questions and I'm happy to respond to those after she's finished. So Mrs. Graham, I'll pass it to you.
All right. Good evening, Chair Swigert, Vice Chair Mercer, and members of the board. Like Dr. Cotton said, I'm really grateful to be here to present this work. It's on behalf of the many people whose contributions have brought us here to where we stand today. As you know, the groundwork for Empower two thousand twenty-five began in the eighteen nineteen school year with a listening and learning tour. The information gathered during this tour guided the Empower two thousand twenty-five Steering Committee in establishing our vision, mission, and values. The development of goals and strategies followed. We now find ourselves executing the plan as district leadership work to accomplish tactics that help us to achieve our goals, all the while assessing and adjusting as needed along the way. Over the past three years, despite the turmoil we have all experienced, we held to our vision, values, and mission. I'm proud to say that Chesapeake Public Schools has remained dedicated to empowering all learners to achieve their highest potential. By staying focused on our four goals, which are providing exemplary teaching and learning experiences, recruiting, retaining, and supporting our valued employees, providing safe and supportive learning environments, and engaging, informing, and collaborating with the community, nothing could stand in our way, not even a pandemic. But remember, a vision, mission, and goals, they're only a list without solid leadership, dedicated effort, and structured implementation. The Division of Teaching and Learning has made a lot of progress in its mission to provide exemplary teaching and learning experiences. Their more-of, less-of resource provides valuable guidance to our schools. They've expanded on the enhanced literacy model by increasing instructional time for the science of reading and supported the professional development of designated teachers to be letters trainers. The K twelve, E L A, and math curriculum instruction leadership teams have been restructured and they've implemented Structured Literacy, Wonders, and Dreambox. These are only a few of the instructional accomplishments of our district. College and career readiness remains a solid focus. The first annual World of Works Career Fair for our eighth graders was a huge success. Goal One has also implemented the Grow Your Own program, providing students with work-based experiences within our division. Dual enrollment, C T E, and STEAM courses for high school students have also increased. The co-labs have been making progress by supporting schools and enhancing instruction as they focus on technology innovation, project-based learning and assessment, and compassionate and responsive educational supports or cares. The data management system has been customized to meet the needs based on responses provided by polling administrators and counselors, resulting in a synergy and multi-tiered system of supports, or M T S S, analytics expansion. While we celebrate these successes, Goal One is still moving forward. As an example of Goal One's future plans, Chesapeake Public Schools preschool curriculum will be evaluated. Professional development will be developed to support the new preschool program and project-based learning and assessments. A multi-tiered systems of support coaching model will be launched. And the curriculum instruction team is working on broadening curriculum resources. Additionally, professional learning communities structures will be revisited. Schools will be evaluated based on where they are in their progress so that training can be developed to meet their individual needs and expectations can be communicated. Under Goal Two, Human Resources continues to recruit, retain, and support our valued employees. Our district is now using an online employment and employee experience verification system, which expedite, expedite the processes for employees. Professional development modules and new budget software with related training has also been implemented. Goal Two is working to procure and implement a new H R and payroll system and are working to streamline the new employee onboarding process. In addition, employees are and will continue to be offered opportunities for dual employment in classified positions. In order to increase convenience and accessibility, employees will continue to be able to attend benefits and resource sessions virtually. An emphasis will also be placed on support for new employees as evidenced in this slide. Safety is our top priority. Therefore, Goal Three has enhanced the School Safety Task Force structure and established regular meetings. In addition, they have applied for safety grants to increase visibility and communications. A training video on S bar codes for division-wide consistency has been provided. And Goal Three has also relaunched Multi-Tierred System of Supports, or M T S S. To enhance the Continuous School Improvement Plan, new student behavior and attendance data has been included. Concerning technology, Go Fan, an online ticketing program, and Lightspeed Classroom, a monitoring service, has been launched. And E-Hall Pass has been expanded. Goal Three is full steam ahead next year with new initiatives including additional security measures for entryways, providing new safety reference guides for all classrooms, piloting, piloting the use of weapons detectors, continuing to replace radios and upgrade cameras, expanding access controls, providing safety training for faculty and staff, and collaborating with local law enforcement to provide additional security staff for elementary schools. Goal Three is excited about the expansion of student I D badges to all elementary schools next year. Additionally, transportation will be moving to the joint maintenance facility. Athletics options will be expanded by introducing soccer and baseball to middle school. A strategic plan for athletics will be generated. E stat guidelines will be created. And research will be conducted on innovative alternatives to suspension and expulsion models. Our goal to engage, inform, and collaborate with the community has gained momentum this year. Goal Four has reinstated the Superintendent's Community Engagement Council with the support of one of our community partners, Demuth Train. This allows the superintendent to gain valuable feedback from the community stakeholders on a variety of issues. They've also opened two family engagement centers with the help of Title One, of the Title One team and hosted multiple activities and events across the district. The FACE team held meetings with schools to assist the submission and of complete and thorough applications for the Purple Star designation. And we are happy to report one hundred percent of our schools has earned that Purple Star, making Chesapeake Public Schools the first division in the Commonwealth to hold this honor. Through partnerships with the Educational Foundation, care spaces have been installed in all middle schools and high schools. Also new this year is an enhanced look and format for the student handbook and the completion of an R F P for a new content management system that includes a user-friendly web platform. Goal Four is also proud to say that they have benefited tremendously from the support provided by INSPIRA and our teams presented at a national conference, highlighting the great work of CPS. Staying abreast to the best practices in school communications allowed the team to better support schools with brand management and other communication needs. Looking ahead, Goal Four is eager to continue engaging, informing, and collaborating with the community. This will be done by connecting families with businesses and community partnerships, meeting with schools to identify community resources and support for families, training faculty and staff about resources and needs of military families, increasing early childhood and kindergarten readiness outreach, and adopting and implementing a new content management system including a website, mobile app, and parent alert system. As we round the corner on Empower two thousand twenty-five, we must continue to ensure our work is aligned with our common purpose, empowering all learners to achieve their highest potential. During the upcoming school year, the Empower Steering Committee and Goal Planning Teams will meet monthly on an alternating schedule. We will keep you posted on the progress and we look forward to what the new school year brings. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Dean.
I just had a question on, I believe it was Goal Three for Environment. There were two things called out and I just wondered if you could elaborate. One of them was the strategic plan for athletics and the other one was the innovative alternatives to suspension and expulsion models.
Yeah, I will take a look at that and then Dr. Miller will clean up my mess. We are looking at ways that we can enhance our athletic programs. And as you noted, as you heard this evening, we are adding two sports to middle schools. But we're trying to look at athletics from a long-range view, in particular, looking at our facilities because we do have some dire needs in some of our facilities that we want to focus on. And we can't, we can't do them all at one time, so we want to look at them over time. Some other items that you've already heard about, for example, is the middle school principals have asked for additional support with an athletics or activities coordinator at their schools. We've, we've tried to handle that through stipends. Right now, obviously, it's something we have to look toward for future budgets. But, but there are several things related to athletics that we want to plan over the next five years rather than, than looking from year to year. So that's what we're, what we're looking at. As far as discipline goes, we are looking at making sure, I know you all know this as board members, we do monitor our discipline. We, the state also monitors our discipline as well, especially for certain student groups, students with disabilities, as well as particular student groups and how well they're represented in, in discipline and suspensions. So we're always looking to make sure that we're enhancing those options. And Dr. Miller, do you want to add to that? Because you, you have a team that just met recently to discuss this.
Yes, sir. We are also looking at how we're utilizing I S S as a method for refocusing and resetting on behaviors as well. You can probably get a presentation on that shortly. But you can recall, if you ever were in school, not that you ever, you know, were in I S S or anything like that. But you go in I S S, you sit there all day, you don't do anything, you do your work, and then you come out. Well, did we address the behaviors that sent you there first? So we're looking at options of how we can utilize going to in-school suspension better so that we don't have reoccurrences of the same behaviors that we're experiencing. And also looking at other ways that we can, besides going to the long-term suspension, what other methods are out there that other people are using and are seeing success with that type of suspension? So we're just looking at other opportunities and innovative ways that we can curb some of the behaviors that we're seeing.
Thank you.
I see no additional questions, so thank you, Ms. Graham.
Thank you.
We are now moving on to the action agenda and we are looking at the V S B A Conference on Education. Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Chair Swigert. I would like to share an opportunity with the board. The two thousand twenty-three V S B A Conference on Education is scheduled for July thirteenth. It'll be held at the Hilton Short Pump Hotel in Richmond. Are there any board members who wish to attend this conference? If you would, would you mind raising your hand? this conference? If you would, would you mind raising your hand? All right, I've got Mercer and Swigert, and I'll need a motion to approve.
Motion made.
Motion made by Mr. Poole. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Boone. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Dr. Smith?
Motion carries with all board members voting yes. Thank you so much.
We will now move to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a reminder, not that I need to remind people, this Thursday, June fifteenth is the last day of school for students, and is also an early release day. Like I said, I think everyone's well aware of that. This week marks the last week of another incredible school year, and it makes me incredibly proud to be able to share some of the many exciting ways we have been celebrating the accomplishments of our students and staff at the end of this year. Much of the excitement of the last month of school includes field days. We couldn't support these types of activities for our students without the generous support of our families and community volunteers. We'd like to thank the League of Advocates for their support of Thurgood Marshall's Field Day Fun last week. The group manned a variety of games and activities, including tricycle races, relays, and more. They also provided popsicles and water to help keep everyone cool. Thank you to the league and to all of our parents and community volunteers. Of course, you see some teachers on those tricycles there. If you haven't had a chance to visit our website recently to check out our Virtual Spring Art Show, I'd highly recommend you set aside some time to do just that. Our end-of-the-year art show features the incredible work of our art students at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Their work also represents a wide range of artistic mediums and, and techniques. Congratulations to all of the students who have their work displayed. The talents of our Project Search students were also on display recently as they celebrated their graduation ceremony from their school-to-work transition program. This longstanding collaborative partnership with Chesapeake Regional Healthcare, The Choice Group, and the Virginia Department of Education allows our students to leave us equipped with valuable job training and hands-on internship experiences. It was truly an honor to hear directly from the graduates about how their internship experiences impacted them and their future plans. I'd like to thank the members of my staff who took the time to attend this event, and I know that I joined them in sharing how proud we are of these students for working toward their goals. Earlier this month, we welcomed State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Dr. Lisa Coons, to several of our schools. She visited Great Bridge Primary, Hugo Owens Middle, Deep Creek Middle, and the Chesapeake Career Center as part of her tour, and saw several of our career and technical education and computer science initiatives in action. She met with the Virginia Computer Science Teacher of the Year, Karen Daniel, and saw our kindergartners engaged in a coding lesson. Dr. Coons also joined us at our annual career signing day, as many of our board members did as well, for our Chesapeake Career Center students, and provided remarks to the guests. More than seventy students committed to entering the workforce during the event in fields including nine-one-one dispatch, cosmetology, collision repair, firefighting, fighting, excuse me, firefighting, and many others. They were joined by their future employers, instructors, family, and friends to celebrate signing their letters of intent, and like I always say, the parents were the most excited that they have jobs, careers ahead of them. I was also very proud to be there to help recognize seven students, one from each high school, with the J.A. Cotton Career Scholar Award. These students received one thousand dollars to help them jumpstart their professional futures. Thank you to the Chesapeake Public Schools Education Foundation and the Chesapeake Economic Development for sponsoring these awards. Quite a few of our teachers had something to celebrate recently, too. They were surprised as the 2023 Chesapeake Public Schools Educational Foundation Instructional Innovations Grant Program recipients. These generous grants are made possible through the Educational Foundation and Title One. This year, over fifty-seven thousand dollars in grants were awarded for projects including broadcast studios, flexible seating, collaboration kits, and much more. We can't wait to see these grants in action next school year. As we gear up for graduation this week, and many of our seniors are being recognized for their outstanding achievements, I'd like to thank the Cavalier Auto Group for once again supporting our students. They recently presented one senior from each of our seven high schools with a two thousand dollar scholarship in partnership with our Chesapeake Educational Foundation. Students joined their families for a celebration of their success recently at Cavalier Ford in Greenbrier. Thank you again to the Auto Group for their generosity and support of these very deserving young people. You met other very deserving, another very deserving group of seniors earlier tonight, but I also wanted you to be able to see some of their reactions when they were recently surprised with the news that they were awarded a guaranteed teaching contract to return to teach with us after they complete their teacher licensure program. I'd like to thank members of our Human Resources Department, Career and Technical Education Department, and Rachel Hickey, our 2023 Chesapeake Teacher of the Year, who are all on hand to help give them the great news, and also thank their cooperating teachers, both at the high school level and in their internship experiences. Congratulations again to these future educators. On June sixth, twenty twenty-three, Great Bridge Middle School dedicated their courtyard in honor of former principal Craig Mills. Mr. Mills retired from Chesapeake Public Schools after forty-seven years. He began at Great Bridge Middle Schools, he began at Great Bridge Middle School's band director, of course, it was junior high at that time, in nineteen seventy-five, and after serving as assistant principal and principal of B.M. Williams Primary, he returned to Great Bridge Middle School and served the last twelve years of his career as principal. It was my honor to be there to help the Wildcat community honor his service to our school district and the students and staff at Great Bridge Middle. We can't wait to see so many of our seniors celebrate, that we celebrated tonight, and of course, their classmates as they walk across the stage at the graduation ceremonies later this week. I know I join everyone in it with the excitement of celebrating our graduates. We'd like to thank the Chartway Arena and Old Dominion University for hosting our events again this year. We also encourage all guests and graduates to visit the Chartway Arena's website for information on parking, ADA accessibility, and other additional information regarding the venue. There will be no reserved seating, and guests will be permitted to enter the venue one hour before the start of each ceremony. This will allow ample space for families, to allow ample space for families with the priority seating. The school board will be seated in the back of the arena in section two zero one, in case you want to wave at us. For those who are unable to attend in person, all of our ceremonies will be live-streamed, and the link is available on our website. We will also host digital versions of our graduation programs. We'll post those, and we'll share photo galleries after each ceremony. A lot of families get real excited about that opportunity. Again, I'd like to extend my warmest congratulations to the class of 2023. We are so proud of you. This completes my spotlight, Madam Chair.
Last on our agenda this evening is board member items. Does any board member have an item to bring before the group?
So, as we have heard tonight and over the past several weeks and months, unfortunately, we're continuing to hear about the Satan Club and the overall use of our facilities by non-exempt organizations. So while the revised policy, as I'm sure many people remember, was adopted by a five-four vote, I personally still stand strongly on my original position. And quite honestly, if nothing else, I'm, I'm even stronger on it based on some of the events that have unfolded. To me, allowing non-exempt organizations to utilize our facilities doesn't make sense financially. Safety concerns still remain. We're still not equipped to be in the venue rental business, nor do I think that that's an avenue we want to go down. In addition, the revised facility use policy really has only increased the administrative burden on Dr. Cotton, Dr. Cotton and his staff. And honestly, I believe it's been utilized to be nothing but a distraction. I personally ran on a platform for removing distractions while protecting childhood innocence so that we could focus on ensuring high-quality education that will allow all students to become productive citizens in society. And that is why tonight, I would like to request that on the action agenda for our next meeting on June twenty-sixth, that we take a revote on the facility use policy. My request specifically would be to remove the use of our, of the use of our facilities by those organizations that fall into the non-exempt status. I want to thank colleagues Boone, McCormick, and Walker for their initial support on this proposal and ask for your continued support. And I want to be respectful to the other colleagues on the board by providing you with a heads-up of, of where my mind is at with this, and also time to diligently reconsider your original position regarding facility use. Finally, please remember that there are so many things in this world that we cannot control, but this is actually something that is within our control. We should be focused on education, and this is an opportunity for us to remove the noise and do just that. Chair Swigert, I will look to you to let me know if anything needs to happen tonight procedurally to ensure that this can be put on an action agenda for our next meeting. And thank you in advance to all the board members for your consideration on this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Per Robert's Rules of Order, which we follow, technically, a revote is not an option. However, we do have other ways we can readdress issues that are of concern, and we will certainly talk offline to look at our options there. Mr. McCormick?
Thank you, Chair Swigert. My name was mentioned earlier with some misinformation, so I wanted to take the opportunity to clarify some of that and provide some additional context. One of the speakers, Mr. Timothy Todd, had emailed me, like he mentioned during the public comment ten days ago. I did respond to that email, and that's what I wanted to to clarify and actually read that response. So, on the same day that Mr. Todd emailed me about forty minutes after he emailed me, I sent the following response to Mr. Timothy Todd. "Thank you for your email and concern. Even more importantly, thank you for serving our school division as a bus driver. I know how critical your role is and appreciate your dedication. In regards to your specific concerns, I'm going to contact Central Office and gather additional information related to the use of new buses. I will follow up when I have additional information. Thank you again, John." I wanted to read that because earlier he had mentioned that I did not respond to him, so I wanted to actually read the response. After that email, I did exactly what I said I was going to do, and I contacted Dr. Cotton and asked for additional information, asked for context, and throughout the next seven days had multiple emails with Dr. Cotton. "Mr. Todd, despite throwing me under the bus, I would love to see your issue resolved. I'd love to be active in resolving your issues. So, Dr. Cotton, if you and Mr. Benson can follow up, I'd love to see that if there's some legitimacy to these issues that they be addressed properly. Thank you."
Mr. Mercer?
Sure. And before I make my comments, Mr. McCormick, it won't be the last time. I have the distinct honor and privilege of being the Chair of CESEP, which is a southeastern cooperative education program. A number of school systems come together to deal with everything from autism to severe behavior problems. And this past week, I had the opportunity to go and see the REACH program, which is at St. Mary's Home. We have a number of Chesapeake students who are there. We also have others that are more, even more challenged that are at Lake Taylor Transitional Center. And I just want to give a word out to those who work in those facilities, the facility there, what dedicated people they are. I got to meet some Chesapeake students, and it was just a wonderful experience seeing how lovingly cared for they are, including some of our students who reside there, who actually come to Chesapeake Public Schools for some of their educational experience. Then I also want to give a word, Dr. Cotton mentioned it, to all the graduates in the class of two thousand twenty-three. It's a momentous year for me. I'm frequently called the dinosaur on the board, and I am, and this will be the fiftieth anniversary. In fact, tomorrow night will be fifty years ago, that ten-thirty at night in a high school stadium after a torrential storm that graduated from Indian River High School. So, not only congratulations to the Braves, but all of our high schools on this special, special time in our seniors' lives.
Dr. Walker?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a quick shout-out and thank you to Dr. Austin and your team for the Teacher for Tomorrow program that we saw tonight. I just know firsthand how wonderful that program is, because I was lucky enough to be a cooperating teacher for someone who was selected for a guaranteed contract with Chesapeake. Just seeing all of those faces tonight and how, I just know that that's such an important recruitment effort that we have, so thank you. And I would honestly put our Teachers for Tomorrow program up against several student teaching programs that are offered at the higher level, higher ed level, and our students are just so lucky to be going into their teacher prep programs with that. So thank you. That was a huge win for Chesapeake that we saw tonight.
Seeing no other comments, I just want to take a quick moment to wish a very happy birthday to Ms. Scott, who celebrated very recently, and to Mr. Poole, who will be celebrating tomorrow. Happy birthday to both of you. And with that, I will call this meeting adjourned.